I'll call this meeting to order. This is the planning board meeting for December twenty second, two thousand twenty one. And we're having this meeting at six o'clock. Tonight, we are really considering the zoning amendments for this upcoming two thousand twenty two amendment period. We're gonna go through the building heights, steep slopes, and driveway setbacks, some draft narrative that we received. There are no cases, public hearing cases tonight. So this is primarily a working session to get through the zoning amendments so we can meet the calendar for posting the amendments. Let me just go around the room and have people introduce themselves.
Gary.
John Moran.
Edward Deal.
Dirk Rothenheiss.
Susan Mooney.
Ian McKenna.
Thank you. I'm gonna try and keep this somewhat efficient so as possible. I'd like to cap it at an hour. We'll see where we are, maybe forty five minutes. If we wanna go a little bit longer, then we'll decide that. But given the holiday season and this is a special meeting, not a special meeting, but just wanna keep, keep things rolling, that's all. But I, we do have some critical dates we need to meet. Maybe we should do that first, look at these dates. So we're in December. The next really, the milestone, Blair, you can direct me when I'm wrong here, but the last day to post and publish public notes for a hearing on the zoning amendments is January sixth. So we'll have to get the language available when we post it, right? So we have to have that language filed for the posting. And then the last day to hold the first public meeting is January seventeenth. We would be holding public hearing in our normal schedule, right? Planned. We have a meeting on January twelfth.
Twelfth, here we are.
So that would be the first public hearing for the zoning amendments. That's our target.
Because by holding the meeting today, we can notice early enough, right? That's the way. Right, but we can, because if we make decisions today, I think that's part of the reason we held today, right? So we can notice for the twelfth, if we wanna do it on the twelfth.
Right, so we can get our language ready for the sixth.
Yeah, gotcha. Yes, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm just trying to backtrack, yeah.
Yeah, and then the sixth will post for the January twelfth meeting.
Gotcha.
Oh, wait a minute, we need how many days does it need to be posted?
Um, I think it's ten, and I'm trying to find my notes, so I believe it's ten. Like you can't count the day that it posts, it's the day of the meeting. There's like ten clear days. So the typical public hearing notice, I don't know if it's the day for the zoning, I believe we talked about it before, it's ten days. So website, which is probably, please. So basically, yeah, so basically, I think ten days out, it's gonna be an issue.
It brings us back to the first weekend, right?
Well, it brings it back to January second.
Right.
Yeah, I think this was the meeting, we had to kind of be ready to uh, put our language kind of put, ready to be able to move forward to
Yeah.
Post it next week.
Post it, because we can make changes after that first meeting, but they can't be substantive, right?
Yeah.
And just kind of
Okay.
Understanding.
Changes based on input, based on public, yeah.
Standard changes.
That's what we're shooting for. Okay, so should we just start through these?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Start with the first one here, which is the building height definition.
I got some updated stuff for you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Three, three hole punch?
No, not, well, we can't afford stable, we can't afford everybody.
In for the paper, not double sided.
Yeah, I thought of that, I thought of it actually. All right. So we kinda talked about last time, I think the only things I brought up last time when we talked about this was ways to thin it down and, you know, I talked about, you know, shall we remove the need for a parapet wall in the definition? Um, and then that kind of brought us to discussing on the second page, which is a direct, directly taken from the city of Portsmouth. This is the figure, the image that they place right after the definition for building height. Obviously, they have a lot of different architectures, so that's why they have multiple scenarios. We kinda talked about thinning this down to maybe two, with some combinations between the two, between some of the different subfigures. So on the third page, that's essentially what I put together. I did do this in CAD, so I can, we can edit this however we need to. We can provide it as PDFs or anything like that. So basically, I took the, on the third page, I took the top two rough images from the figure on page two, basically kinda combined some stuff from all four of them. The major one here, that's the difference is, you know, so we have our standard gable roof shown on the right side for residential or commercial construction, but just showing there that the height is taken to the midpoint. And then it kinda goes back to the grade plane, which is the lowest average point within six feet from the edge of the building. What you see, the reason the building height dimension is shown on the left side of the building as well is because and it's kinda just, it's just the fact of when you measure, is if the grade is level on the exterior wall, it's just taken right at the wall. You don't need to go six feet out if you have a sidewalk or something next to the building. The left-hand image on that third page was of the flat or flat top mansard roof, it's kind of a combination. That's where we start, we really depict how building height is taken, if there's a parapet wall or not. But also if you have a parapet that's above or below two feet, which is what essentially is what's described in the definition of building height under number three on building height. So it's, you know, if you have a commercial structure that wants to put a five-foot parapet wall at the top of their building to hide all their HVAC or systems or something like that, that does get counted in their building height. But if, you know, it's pretty common for a lot of commercial buildings just to put a two-foot one. Usually eighteen, eighteen to twenty-four inches on the top of that, which mostly hides your HVAC, especially from street view. So if that's the case, if it's two feet or less, it's not counted in the building height, because that's seen as more of a just architectural feature. So we can choose to keep it that way. Again, this was kinda taken from Portsmouth. I have seen that in the past, I have seen other towns that say, hey, if you keep your parapet wall below a certain distance, we don't make it count in building height. But if they get too big, then we do want it counted, so. That's really, it's just a combination, this one, I just thinned it down, so we can edit it however we want. The only thing I think maybe that I would wanna talk about changing was, you can see on the bottom of, I guess it's really the Portsmouth one or mine. We put a thing there that says, building height equals average around building perimeter at five-foot intervals. That is also number four under building height. So that is some people might consider that a little bit extreme, as you gotta go every five feet around the edge of a building and take that measurement, just from a calculation perspective. I've also seen it, some towns do it where they say at the four corners or corners of the building, if it's not four corners. You can say corners and midpoints of building, it's basically just you have a, especially some of these complex slope sites, every five feet around the edge of a building, within that six-feet grid plane. It's a pretty complicated calculation to go around and prove it out if the building inspector or the planning board asks for that. So the only one I was thinking about is if we wanted to change that from five-foot intervals to average around the building at building corners or at building corners and midpoints. It's really just for the applicant, it's easier for somebody, whether it's an engineer, obviously it's engineer, easier for them, but also say if a homeowner was coming in with a building plan, it's easier for them to do building corners, stuff like that, so. That's the only thing I noticed, if there's any comments or things you guys would like to see changed on that third sheet, again, I can edit that pretty easily. Now that it's a live document on my computer.
Yeah, good, please.
So parapet wall. Would anybody ever sort of like bringing it off the face of the wall and, and, you know, because usually the utilities are like, you know, more in the middle somewhere. They ever take it off of the wall and then what, four feet or something like that, or would they always be doing it on the edge?
Yeah, tech, so yeah, that's technically, yeah, sometimes they'll do, they'll come in ten feet off the wall, keep their HVAC in the center. Yeah, and do it that way. I think I've seen, when they do do that and bring it into the center, it's, they tend to be taller because of the angle from the street. If you put it right at the edge of the building, you're basically buying that distance from the street view. If it's in the center, you've gotta go higher to get the same hiding, you know, based on that angle, you gotta go higher to get the same effect of shielding from view, so.
So would this capture that meaning? Does it, no, like, would it no longer be considered part of building height if it was pulled off of the face of the building?
That's what you're saying, like, if you wanted to
We wouldn't, we wouldn't need to be, it's only at the, at the face of the building, because it's for fire access. So, you know, they could put a ladder up to that without the parapet, if the parapet's set back.
Yep.
It, it won't be in the, won't be in the calculation, really. It's really, if, if, if it's, yeah, building height, it's really at the face of
I, yeah, I didn't have, yeah, I just, I'm just
Yeah.
That's my
And I think that would only apply, obviously, to if somebody was doing that for the purpose of hiding mechanicals or something. If somebody tried to go up and then come in and go up another story, that, you can't get around it that way, but um, yeah, I see what you're saying, obviously.
Put it past people, but, yeah, yeah, I hear.
There's always loopholes in every, every ordinance, but
We have that covered by, for a flat surface, the highest point on roof surface, so I think
Yep.
Where the highest point of the roof is.
I think the other kind of piece of that parapet wall could be, I guess you could call it a parapet, I would, I would call it a gambrel, but a more of a facade wall that could extend beyond the roof.
Right, and
Might be a ten-foot high wall, but it's running out of a steep slope in front of the, the outside wall of the building.
And I think it's, when you, and then I think, I know what you're talking about a lot, it's pretty common with commercials, you go ten feet and then it might be open in the center. But you get that gambrel effect around the edges of the building. But then it's like, do you, then are you looking back at the midpoint of that gambrel pitched, which is, that's measured to the midpoint of that.
So that could be, or, or we could also look at it, I think, as the top of that not being two feet above the actual roof.
Right, and that's one of those, that's odd, yeah, if you're doing that, where it serves the purpose of a parapet wall, but it's a different si, gambrel style parapet wall, which is becoming more popular. I guess that's almost a case by case, because it's almost a combination of these two. You'd have to, the only way to define it clearly would be to pull it out and do a completely separate, which
Yeah, but
I don't, yeah, I think even if we ran into it, we'd just make a judgment call as to which one applied to it.
What matters is that the fire department ladder will reach and they'll be able to get access to that area.
Yeah.
On that same line, looking at number four, these are directed at a building that's either square or rectangular. But what if you have a building that has two main areas, one that is square or rectangular, that's built on a level grade, and then another part of the building which is built on a slope? Do those two separate entities get measured differently, or do they all get averaged in with the
So
building part that's on the slope?
My first thought is that it would, you take the entire, if it's a connected structure and interior to it, you can move about the structure freely. Then that's considered one structure, which then, yes, you have to consider that average. And that's where, you know, it's like somebody on the lake. You know, they might have a single story exposed, but if it's steep enough, I mean, some of those places, you can probably almost get three stories on the lakeside depending on height. But that's where, yeah, it's great on the upper side, and that's where that average comes in. So on your low side, you could be at forty feet, but on the other side, you're at fifteen feet, technically that brings your your average down. It all plays off each other with that, because of the averaging.
And if we put corners, then, or five, every five feet, then it would take into account the jogs of an irregular shape, not just square, it wouldn't be just four corners, it would be multiple corners.
But the whole thing would get averaged as, as a single unit? Even if there were firewalls built in between the two major sections and
You could ask, in, in that case hypothetically, you know, hypothetically, they could ask for a variance, because this one section is completely different than the topography of a larger structure, if it's like a tiny area or something. Yeah, that would be a unique case, and, you know, that's why, you know, I suggested instead of the five-foot intervals, maybe we try and just simplify it so somebody knows, okay, corners. A benefit to doing corners and midpoints, though, is I think this came up, but I don't remember if it was a comment from Dale or the fire chief. But there's a pretty common type of construction these days, where you have the, you enter on the long, the, I guess, the skinny end of the house in the basement, that's where your garage is. And then you have two full stories and a gambrel roof. And then on the three other sides of the house, they tend to bring up the grade. Depending on the grading of that foundation in the house, if you were to hold, say, just corners, you might be, you know, maybe they're at thirty-six feet on that side of the garage, but they're at twenty-something on the other three sides. But if you only do corners, you have too high and too low, and then you're playing off each other. I know that was just, that type of construction's really common these days, and I think it was one of those two that brought it up, that we should keep that type of construction particularly in mind. If you use midpoints, you have three sides helping, which is, three sides outweighs the one side in terms of where they're actually gonna access for a fire. It kind of outweighs that one side, which is taller because of the garage. Oftentimes, they'll put retaining walls and stuff like that, but
So I think if, if we ask fire chief for input on the average, what we're gonna the response probably will be, and kind of back to what you were just talking about, that average height. But typically, what happens is the highest point ends up at the driveway, not, no, all the time, but a lot of times, because you got a garage under, let's say, a two-story, and then your gable.
Yep.
So now, and, 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 and think about it, I'm just kinda imagining what the fire chief's gonna, how he's gonna look at it. He's gonna say, well, that's where we're gonna wanna try to get in.
Especially if it's in the winter, that's the only thing that's cleared, too, that they can clearly get at, so.
So, so that's the only problem I see with the averages possibly and very possibly too hot.
So you would prefer corner to corner or, or five-foot intervals? Corner to corner would be a more modest height.
I think more of a
Worst case.
I think more of a, like, thirty-four was kinda like the ma, like, we have now max building, building height's thirty-four feet, so I think in the fire chief's mind, possibly, I don't know, or than anybody's, or speak for anybody, but is that, that's gonna be the max height from any point around the building, because that's what they can access. So, you know, again, they're in a immersed situation. They have to go anywhere they can go in. And if, and if the only thing they can access is the area that's forty feet or forty-five feet tall, it's a, I guess it'd be a problem. I don't know if we're creating a loophole by doing this, because like, could you potentially end up with like a forty-five foot on one side and twenty foot on the other and
And so, yeah, if somebody buried, yeah, and that's what you kinda could get up that lakeside, you could, by doing an averaging of any kind, you could have somebody that
Worse.
You could work it out and have three stories exposed on one side with a gambrel on top.
Yeah.
But the rest of the house structure is buried, or using retaining walls and stuff, you can, you could potentially raise that grade, so. That is, I guess, one of the downsides to averaging.
Either lakeside or hillside, so
Right, yeah.
Going up, sometimes people, this is their view shed, they're gonna build up places, the big, big windows up on this side.
Sure.
That might be, you know, forty feet or more, and that's, you know
So maybe, you know, whether we wanna just leave it the way it is and just ask for, you know, just to finalize the language and ask the fire chief for his feedback, because being a town that our only vertical access is ladders, he can't afford to have, maybe he can't afford to have forty-five foot house even on one side, so.
By averaging, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
I, I think that's really a preference down to the chief and how they procedurally try and access homes, because usually if you say, oh, well, it's only one side, but three sides are are easily accessible.
But still, you know.
Right, so it's like you can't plan, you can't plan how a fire moves through a house or something like that, so.
I can tell you that the fire chief did provide input.
Yeah.
And, you know, written letter, that they want at thirty-five feet, recommends it, thirty-five feet from the lowest point of the finished grade.
Okay.
Within twelve feet to the highest point of the structure.
Within twelve feet?
Within.
So that's the grade plane essentially.
So, yeah, so that's that, that's the input we got back from the fire chief. So from the lowest point to the highest point.
So no averaging, just
Right, which we do have to think about, I mean, how is that achievable now? I mean, are people building homes that right now have
And that was where Dale, I think, said, that if that, if he holds that, he's like, I would deny fifty percent of the building application.
Right, right, so the building inspector said that if he enforced this, many of the homes would not have the look and characteristics of the homes we see right now. It would be single story or one and a half story, wouldn't have colonials in the, in town being built. So we have to think about that on the planning side of, you know, what, what kind of houses are we defining can, can't be built here?
Well, the downside of that, too, is, when you say, right, what you're talking about is, you do a one-level home, you know, speaking from experience, you could have a footprint that's sixty feet by sixty-six feet, instead of a home that's thirty by forty. I mean, a much larger footprint of a house.
Right.
Because you're trying to do a single, and then if you put it on a lot size, like point eight, because it's part of the new subdivisions that are one of those, then you try to put your septic in, then you try to put your leach field in, I mean, and then your well.
They're clearing the whole lot to make it happen.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna take away that rural character of the woods, the trees and all this, because
And, and then
And then you're gonna find more regulations, because they're probably not gonna meet their setbacks with the seventy-five for the well.
Yeah.
Because where the house has to go and where the septic has to go, and you're gonna limit the space on the land, so.
And that's why that type of construction, where you have your drive-in garage and the basement level with two stories above, is so common, because you're
You maximize the space.
Reduce concrete cost.
Sure.
It's a much smaller footprint, and it's something that you can work into a slope, slope lot.
So as an example, and I, this is what, one of the things that he provided, I can pass this around, there's a home I don't know if you guys had the file from when, or the letter from the chief, but provided a home that's, I know you guys won't be able to see it, but pass around. So it's a standard, it's almost a two, two-level cape, but with a garage below it. And it, just on average, maybe it's ten-foot floor-to-floor, Gary, maybe?
Average is an eight-foot ceiling.
Average is eight foot?
Plus the frame, so yeah, it's gonna be
Maybe a ten-foot floor-to-floor, so we've got one, ten, twenty, thirty, to the height of the second floor. And then the, then there's the eve, so you wouldn't be able to build this building, and not again with the
With a stand, yeah, with a standard pitch.
If we said, from the lowest point to the highest point.
That's also, well, it looks like it's There's a window on that third story, too, so I don't know if they're intending for that to be occupied space, too, which is definitely a factor.
I believe the chief was specifying not the peak height, but the access to, say, that third level window.
Oh.
You know, that provides access to
That's what the, yeah.
To the living space, so it's not the peak height, but it's
And that's where, you know, generally with a gambrel style, that falls right around the midpoint of that gambrel roof. The town of New London goes a step further, and they actually specifically say that building height is to the highest occupiable space, so if you have an attic space that you are intending to be a playroom or something, that does get counted. Really depends on the pitch of the roof, too.
It does, he did also include some things, like I just said, Gary, to allow access into that, whatever that top story window would be. That would be the height, but he also indicated in the written part highest point of the structure. So, you know, we're talking roofs in here, I would say the highest point would be the ridge line.
I think, based on that, it probably gave us, he, as we were talking about the mid-height of that gable, which is the possible living space.
Mm-hmm.
Makes, I, I don't think the chief would have heartburn with that kind of wording, you know, not the peak, but the being access, having the, the height
To get to that midpoint.
Accessible to that living space.
So now it's a matter of whether we're gonna average them, or we're just saying from the lowest point? Fire chief recommends the lowest point. Sometimes that's, you know, not gonna be realistic, because it might be as there might be no driveway access, or it might be the backside.
We've seen a lot of the lots nowadays, a lot of slope, and the easiest way to decrease your disturbance, which our ordinance also seeks to do, is limit disturbance on lots. And I know that, that's, the reason builders are going with this is because you do get the, it's cheaper, you have less concrete, which is a big factor in residential home construction. There's a reason they go with that, it's a simpler, put a footprint in and go up, you don't have to do a slab garage, all that kinda stuff, but it just makes me think of when Dale commented that fifty percent of the applications will get denied, and I'm sure that hasn't changed, they have, the styles of homes haven't really changed, that have been coming through in the last couple of years. And we know there's plenty more bound to come, so it'd be a pretty abrupt change to
I think, when we talk about style of homes, and I know other towns are more, you know, definitive on that. You know, some of these, like, large colonials, you know, are they really what fits, like, the rural character of a town or, or not? You know, a very large box, you know, might not even be necessarily what the rural character of the town is, or what our master plan is like guided us towards. But that's getting, you know, a little bit beyond.
I think personally, I think that it just depends on the type of lot, if you have a ten acre lot, it might fit, but yeah, if, if somebody was coming in with an open space subdivision, which actually there's one, the one that comes to mind is in Madbury, across from the ancient to Mahermit, there's a development across the way there, and that's an open space subdivision with probably three thousand square foot plus colonial homes fifty feet apart from each other. It's a, it's a nice neighborhood, but it's it's pretty dense.
And when you start getting up to, you know, third floor, if there's living space in that, like, sleeping space. I have questions about the safety of them anyway, because if, if, look at those pictures, there's only one egress, it appears, which would be inside.
A long way down.
There's nothing on the outside to, like, another roof or whatever to land on if you had to go.
That's a good point about the open space developments, because the lot sizes are smaller. You're gonna typically wanna compact that home as much as you can, because you're working with less, so.
So let's, let's, let's keep moving, so we can know, kinda what, what are we thinking, do we want four corners, or, four corners, what corners?
I think we could also
Average?
I think we could add, if we want, try to like, play the middle ground. I think we could add, if we want, try to like, play the middle ground here, it's, go with the definition like this, and then add, you know, additional language saying at no point will the structure be X feet above.
Oh, I see.
So.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Cause you're, if we do this, I think you're automatically gonna get, well, we have them, you know, places that are above thirty-four feet on at least one side. Should we just say, say thirty-four feet's it, and then the designs could change, or do we add a different height in there?
Meaning one side by law of averages, or whatever we're doing here, um, one side could be forty-five feet, and three sides could be twenty-five, and the average works out to thirty-five. So you can build it, but is it forty-five feet something realistic that they can gain access to?
I wonder if we should, you've just mentioned that word access, I wonder if the, there should be, that word should be added in here somehow. So if it's the most accessible side, it should be, I'm just kinda thinking out loud, but if the most accessible side should be under that height, cause that's a side that.
Yeah, I, it, unfortunately, I think of, the most accessible is gonna be in a, a immediate response, I mean, there might be cars all parked along the, the, the side that has the parking lot or the driveway, and they can't get there from there, so they do have to go to another side, or maybe there's no cars there one day, there's all cars there next day, so. The most accessible side really can't be determined.
Well, not, not having to do with cars parked, but having to do with the lay of the land, the slopes and that, I don't. So for instance, somebody, okay, the, the picture we just looked at, that, that wouldn't be a problem if that third floor was not living space, most likely.
Right, cause they're in the twenty-foot range for that second story window, right? Yeah, about that, yeah.
Right.
And did you, I think you did, you did take some other lang-, you took language from other places, right?
I have some, so if you want me to open that back up, um.
Well, no, I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions, the, I mean, did you see one that was, like, definitive as a low point and a high point? Or are they?
So they used to do that, a lot of towns.
Averaging, or?
A lot of towns have been changing, at least around, that I've dealt with, um. Might have to find it.
I feel like this grade plane, that there's more with, with the international building.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it works well for things like late lot, late lot three, still to, still to be able to place a ladder, you don't wanna steep slope within so many feet. I mean, I think we'll have the, it sounds like we'll have to get this off to the fire chief to, obviously now that we've actually prepared something, he can provide a such a markup of it, the recommendations.
Well, we need to leave today with really the writing of what this was gonna be, right?
Yeah, well, so do we wanna take it one by one, so the first thing I brought up was the, the term, and turn, it's number four on here, but also it's called on the figure is taking the average at five-foot intervals. I guess I think we should do four, uh, at the corners of the building, or corners and midpoints, no, I mean, it's.
Corners and midpoints, but that sounds good, um.
I think corners and midpoints is a little bit, you know, where we're getting these funkier shaped houses and stuff, and because people are trying to take more difficult lots and build one, I think the midpoint is important.
Okay, let's go with that, anybody opposed to going with the midpoint and corners? For measuring?
They're going with the average.
Yeah.
Yeah, you still.
Averaging them based on the midpoint.
Yeah, I'm fine, as long as it's average and we don't have five feet around, every five feet, I'm good.
Yeah. Yep, average around building at corners and midpoints.
If you have a ten-by-ten house, then you're gonna have them every five feet.
Well, we haven't got the tiny houses yet, but that comes out, we'll figure that out.
Not this year.
So that will, so I'll change, alright, so I have to. Okay. So that means, um, number four, under the definition of building height, would be changed to read, number four. To determine building height, measurements shall be taken at every corner and midpoint of building face around the entire structure. An average is calculated from these figures, and that figure shall be the building's height for purposes of this ordinance. Sounds good.
And I like the grade plane, I think that's.
So the grade plane, I'll be good with the six feet, um, he kinda threw out there twelve feet, but I think six feet for the purposes of building permits is.
Yeah.
I agree. And I think we all agree, just to leave the parapet wall, because it applies to commercial structures or industrial structures. Okay.
And on the figures? Just a couple of typos, building, building height. On the bo-, the bottom note, and then the, uh.
Cut on that hip, hip roof from one. Yes, on the left side there. Okay, and then I will change, where it says building height equals, I'll change it to the language we just talked about. So, building height equals average around building, corners and midpoints.
Okay.
Alright, so the next steps, uh, I can get those cleaned up tomorrow, actually, or, um. What do I need to, do I need to simplify, obviously I typed out this document, but do we need a document that just says building height definition, grade plane? Just strip it down to what we're actually adding to the ordinance essentially?
Yeah, the ordinance, the ordinance language or the, uh, proposed ordinance, or the amendment and notice is the summary, right, or is it exact?
For the notice, I'll have to ask them, I think it's, actually, yeah, I think that, I'll have to ask them.
You remember when we did those last year, I thought they were just summaries.
But I think in the.
Describing what it is.
I think in the past, there was a link, so you could read the exact.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that's.
I think Steph, like, when she did the, she was doing like twenty-plus edits to like organizations, they just said like, reorganization of the ordinance.
Right.
That was all that was stated, and then, yes, we provided a, essentially a marked-up document showing the changes.
So the only other part is, um, we need to make sure we, for the building height, that we, uh, don't lose, cause we, we, the current definition of it is in couple spots, and we gotta make sure we, uh, don't lose the actual foot amount, a couple spots in zoning ordinance, the, uh, the districts.
Cause within the speci-, the specific districts, right, we specify what that limit is, but we don't actually have a definition.
Right, so we should be adding it, you're right, yep.
So this is all gonna go into the definition of building.
Which we don't have.
Yeah.
But it stays where it is in the ordinance, cause then that actually gives a number to it. Alright, so I will.
So it's such a, uh, the redefinitions?
Yes.
Oh, correct.
Building height, they, they kind of.
Yes.
And you're gonna have pictures?
Yep, and then I'm gonna essentially between, right below building height, wherever that falls, this, essentially, I can create a clipped image of this or something like that, however we wanna do it, so. I will make that edit tomorrow. I'll try and get a PDF of this thing off to the group.
Okay, great. Well, Blair, you wanna just jump into the steep slopes?
Sure. That was circulated quite in the last meeting, and, um, I made some edits to the original sort of proposal that, um, I changed from our office and I still am kind of, and I've been working on. And so what I did was just, um, edited to make it fit into our document, the way I'm formatting, and some of the updated, um, years referencing, like, um, certain plans. Uh, the twenty-seventeen version of best mannered practices for height and culture, you know, a couple other ones. Uh, beyond that, it's, it's appearing before you as, as, uh, as was intended for the proposal. Uh, it includes some definitions, um, it gives the outline of authority, purpose, likability, activities that are permitted, and quality standards. This will appear essentially as an overlay district, um, in that if you have steep slopes, uh, this will apply, but all the underlying zoning would still apply. Uh, we've settled on fifteen, or, this is proposed as fifteen percent, I don't know if that's settled over or not, but that is what's fifteen percent integrated, fifteen percent would be considered to be a steep slope. Uh, so that, that's, that's essentially what the applicability is, it gives, uh, the same, when we were just talking about here with pipe, it talks about how it's calculated, um, it's two-foot contour intervals every ten feet, um, of course, I lost the language, I don't know if it's. So that's how, how, yeah, that's how it's applied. Permitted activities, you see, forestry logging, tree farming, agriculture and silver culture, outdoor recreation, conservation, single-family residential, where on-site destination determines that sewer disposal and access roads can be constructed uh, in accordance with this regulation. And then telecommunications, and it says, uh, commercial use, so. Doesn't seem to limit too many things, um. In terms of use, assuming that all of the standards can be met. Before the standards get into disturbance, you know, minimizing disturbance, it sets a hard, uh, stop at, um, when the certification shall have a road that of a driveway or local access road exceed eight percent residential, eight percent. It adds further restriction if it, if the slope exceeds twenty-five percent regarding the driveway and access roads to single-family, uh, as well as, uh, any draw, really, um, if it's longer. Or saying it should not be longer than seventy-five feet, uh, it's a bit over the limit. Uh, setbacks or primary extension buildings, turn, uh, sub system, sub bases, um, from ridge lines, slope tops. And then, you know, playing about maintaining is just the, the, they covered as possible, uh, looking at grading and, uh, earth moving, uh, for cuts and fills, um, and, you know, it's packing the excessiveness of cuts and fills to meet your, your slope, uh, wood, um, and then, um, final cuts and fills. That's very neat overview, um, you have the language, um, if my understanding is this had been discussed to some degree, I don't know to the extent, um, prior when I was here, but um, it sounds like there had been some discussion. So, yeah, my, my, my campaign ordinance is largely with this, I love, or ordinance.
Okay.
One of the things that I'll point out, um, when I was looking back over it, I had looked at the definition of a, I kinda see where steep slopes was actually applied in the zoning ordinance, it's actually not anywhere in my reference book, but there's no place that actually following to go to see, see, it's actually in the, um, subdivision.
But we, we have it, it's in the. For building, critical areas. Uh, fit for building and unfit for building, or the. So like, right now, our definition of fit for building are the areas that don't have, well, one of the parts of it is, do not have slopes of twenty-five percent or more.
Yeah.
And unfit for buildings above that, and then we also consider that a critical area, um.
So would those change?
There was, it's not, it just says slopes greater than thirty percent, it doesn't actually tie the sentence to steep slopes, I guess you could apply it. So I think it's good that in this, both ways, that I just went over with defining this, we would actually maintain those for that. Or at least some or all part of, part, part of some of them. I could take it of, of a beautiful way, but I want it wrong with saying, the definitions and how they would, um, planning with, um, creation of this overlay district, it's something.
I think the other part of this, so I think some of the definitions are probably needed, like, impervious surface, we use that terminology now, we just don't define it, I don't, I don't, and I don't think, so that may be, you know, include anyway, and I was wrong, critical areas are in the subdivision regs, as Blair mentioned, they're not in the, uh, zoning regs, so, the zoning side, we just have it in the fit for building, unfit for building. And I, I don't, going back, this was a master plan, immediate action item from two thousand and eleven, uh, for us to address this. I don't know that the way this is written really, really protects those areas, cause it's not saying that you, you can, you have to avoid them, it's just saying minimize it for the most part.
I mean, the only one is like where they say grading or earth moving can't exceed six feet when you cut, you know, fifteen percent, so there's limits to, I guess, design within a, a steep slope area, but.
It's intended for major subdivisions and new site lands only, not, um, you know, three lots or less.
Well, I think the big place in terms of like protecting them is that it can't be counted towards your, that's only to meet the, the building area.
Right.
So it, it, it's sort of like, it pushes you away from them, and it, and it's here, go to the use there. But you're right, it doesn't actually do too much, it doesn't, it's not having to do in terms of, uh, hacking or.
Northwood has this, the steep slope overlay district, and then they have special exceptions that are, uh, a lot, they actually call it special exception, then they say conditional use permit, which I think they're really backwards. Victory in itself, but, um, and they went with twenty percent slopes, which I don't know, my guess is there was a conversation like this, where something that said fifteen, some of twenty-five, and they averaged it, I think that's an odd measurement, um, usually you see fifteen and twenty-five is when you're.
Yeah, some people do two ranges, fifteen to twenty-five, and then twenty-five and over, and whichever range you're in has additional or different restrictions.
And what I like about theirs is that the they mark it by, um, delineation, the steep slope overlay district shall consist of all areas with slopes in excess of twenty percent, totally more than two thousand square feet in contiguous area. Um, so if there isn't fewer than two thousand square feet, or you're probably excluded, I kinda like that, so, you know, you get these one areas where there's just one, this little, one little strange, you know, bump up in the middle of the lot, and you can say, okay, well, we're not gonna.
And that's actually one thing.
It's not really culprised, it's significant, I would even over, you know, a certain number of square feet, and it is.
And they're just gonna grade that out.
Right. Well, that was one thing I was gonna mention too, especially if you get these, just somebody twenty years ago could've gone. Well, that was one thing I was gonna mention too, especially if you get these sort of, this means somebody twenty years ago could have gone and cut or excavated a hole because they wanted some dirt.
Or left a pile and now it has grass on it.
Right. So that's actually one thing I was gonna say is that's actually an issue when we're doing plans is towns don't always specify that and you're like, ah, you know. Do you leave it out or do you show it? So
You don't talk greater.
I think two thousand's a reasonable number too, because that's actually as big as people think.
And I think when we look back to, you know, what, what's the intent of this? Why are we even looking at this? And it's the pur, under the purpose, it's, you know, A through F, you know. Obviously the safe ingress into the lot and sustainability. But then it's, you know, the runoff segmentation, the natural photography, arc scenic quality, integrity of slope stability. So I think, well, it's nice to be able to have that view. I think the intent was that with our master plan, it's to save off. Also enjoy it, like the, the mountain tops and hilltops and things are also part of the scenic character of the, of the town. Trying to preserve those, so sometimes it's a, I guess their number of feet away from a ridge.
So where are we going with this? Are we adding some language in like the two thousand square feet?
I think that would be a good idea, so I'm trying to think where that would go.
It might go on applicability.
Yeah, so that would be So that would almost be a modification to sub-part B of that, right? If that kind of applies, we're basically, sub-part B says no area greater than fifteen percent slope can be counted towards calculated lot envelope. But if we were to add some language saying
So with their twenty percent and then they do talk about twenty-five percent. The restrictions on various steep slopes, to accomplish the purposes of the overlay district, the following shall apply to all portions of this overlay with a slope of twenty-five percent or greater. Destruction of roads, structures, driveways on land with a slope of twenty-five percent or greater shall be prohibited. And I felt like that was kind of the original intent of the steep slope ordinance was to, again, minimize disruption of them, but also firm up, like right now, we say unfit, it's not fit for building. But
But we allow driveways to
Right, which result, resulted in a pretty large cut and a lot of disturbance. And then slopes of twenty-five percent or more shall not be used to fulfill any part of the minimum lot size, which is, we say now. That's already in our language.
What was the, what was the language they had for the two thousand square, right around the two thousand square foot?
So this is Northwood's under delineation. This deep slope protection overlay district shall consist of all areas with slopes in excess of whatever percent we decide on and totally more than two thousand square feet of contiguous area. Slope areas consisting of fewer than two thousand square feet are hereby excluded.
So to that end, sub-part B under applicability, would, we could change that to say no area greater than fifteen percent slope. What did they say, consisting of a two thousand square feet?
Contiguous.
Yeah, conti, you know, yeah, contiguous two thousand square feet or
Why, why would you just add a C?
Because in B we say if it, no area greater than fifteen percent, but we would be specifying saying no area greater than fifteen percent unless it's less than two thousand square feet and it does not, can count.
Well, that's a lot envelope, that's, I think
Yeah, I think the, the, the greater than is not size, it's slope. No area greater than fifteen percent slope. Area greater than.
So it's saying to say no area have, having a slope greater than.
We can toss that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just, yeah, because they started the sentence differently and I think it
Exactly.
It allowed for that to kind of fit into the sentence.
Yeah, I agree.
I told everyone I was gonna do a time check at forty-five minutes in and or fifty-five minutes in. So, time check.
So I thi, I think with this, we need to just decide, my opinion is, do we, do we leave it to major subdivisions and site plans, new site plans? Do we stick with fifteen percent and then add, you know, reinforce the twenty-five percent language that's already in our zoning, that does not fit for building. And that, you know, and just firm up the language that it shouldn't be used for, like they say, construction roads, structures, driveways, et cetera. That sounds reasonable.
I think it makes sense to either keep it at twenty-five percent like we have or meet in the middle more than twenty, because every five percent is pretty noticeable difference out on site.
We changing it from not going with fifteen percent, but going with twenty-five percent?
I think that was, as you were saying, essentially just carry the twenty-five that's already, we've been counting, we call out in lawn envelope and we have been using.
I think we need to be clear on which one we do. And if we say fifteen, I think we need, you know, maybe it's less restrictive on the fifteen and then you know, twenty-five is where the greater restrictions come into play.
And your point about whether it applies to just major subdivisions and site plans is important, because we've had a number of three lot subdivisions come in where they have impacted steep slopes.
How do we classify that though? It's a minor, it could be even just two lots.
But those are driveway impacts, right?
Right, but that's, I mean, this does call out one of the things it does is talk about whether it's a road bed or a driveway.
I mean, this one does say about performance of driveways in here. Nothing greater than eight percent, when you do
Right.
you need certain
But under the applicability, it would only apply to driveways that are approved under a major subdivision, not two lot subdivision or something like that. Which we're seeing more and more of.
Even, well, I think my point is that under our, even in our zoning regulation, we have driveway marks.
Right.
In our sub-regs.
So
So, which, and we have a waiver process for that, which is if we put in zoning, it's a variance.
Now to that end, is this
I like waiver versus variance because
Or do you
The zoning board really isn't capable of looking at driveway slopes and that's more planning board in my opinion.
Or do you do it as a conditional use permit like we did with the wetland thing, because it keeps it with the planning board, but this can live in the zone. We have a single conditional use permit that is what's for open, currently it's open space. And wetland impacts, I think are the only two things that require can submit a conditional use permit.
So I think we just take that part out, about driveways. Because we do capture driveways in our subdivision regs.
Strike number part B.
That brings it back to the purview of this board with waivers and whether or not we should grant them or not. And if we say no to a waiver, they can, so the recourse is variance.
Right. Okay, so
Decision for what?
Percentage?
I'm fine with twenty-five.
Yeah.
I, I kinda like twenty-five just because it's consistent with the rest of our regulations, so you know, fifteen percent things weighs to grade that a little bit. So it's not as impactful. When you take a look at fifteen percent, it does seem steep, but
Add an extra ten percent.
Extra steep, extra steep is definitely what we want to be protecting.
Yeah.
I mean fifteen percent is, twenty-five percent is getting when you're eroding soils, right?
People braid their lawns at fifteen percent.
So, yeah, some people have, you know, nice manicured lawns at fifteen percent and they look great. And they're very stable.
How they stay dry.
Go back to like hiking, twenty-five percent is what? Like thirteen hundred feet of elevation gain over course of mile, right?
Well, I think it works, yeah, it's something like that.
That would be a very tough climb. Uh, so the only thing I would, I think we should add though is just, because right now we have fit for building, unfit for building. We talked about the slope, but we don't capture anything about the driveway. So do we do that here? Where we, we put that extra restriction on various steep slopes, so we call it out specifically that that the construction of roads, structure of driveways on land with a slope twenty-five percent or greater shall be prohibited.
I think we'd be seeing a variance though, almost, you know, every single say fifty percent plus of the subdivision cases we've seen recently propose driveways for degree developed through steep slopes for the driveways, so there'd be a variance for each one of those unless we do a conditional use permit.
I think, yeah, because I feel like that's kind of the intent, is try to avoid the, the disruption of these, these areas. And those do result in pretty substantial cutting fills. You know, you're gonna have to go extra feet out to slope the sides. Looking at like, you know, before and the condos and, well, paper it's this, but then when you get there in reality, you see
Well, even the, um, the homes that were put in on a pork farm, we proved a year or two ago. I drove by that today and they had to do some pretty significant cuts through those
Right, so twelve foot driveway or sixty foot driveway, that becomes sixty feet of cut.
It's basically huge. So transmission lines basically had it down.
So again, this would only be this would, this would be adding language and if we're sticking with major subdivisions and new site plans, then it would only be applying to those. It wouldn't be further restricting. We're probably back in the discussion about fit for building, unfit for building. At, at, on, on those cases, but um
I think if we put that prohibitive language in there, we should consider applying conditional use permits to this though, so that we can keep it. Because if they came for a variance like Dirk said, it's, it's more of a planning board decision, I think, more than a zoning determination.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna I don't wanna add a lot of regulation, because we, we already have the power and regulations that say that we, the planning board can request driveway profiles, we can request, you know, a lot of different information. And if it's above eight percent, then we don't have to provide a waiver. We can try and find a better solution to getting access to the property and work with the applicant. That doesn't happen at the zoning level, it, it happens at this level. And a lot of times the, the the benefit of that is that it's avoiding wetlands. So, you know, there is a trade-off here of where there's some steep slopes and wetlands and as it always has some marginal land left. Then we have to keep it in a balance. So I, I wanna just say no steep slopes. Then that pushes things into wetlands. I, I like, I like twenty-five percent.
And also if we, you know, in, in lieu of adding that pit of language, under the performance standards part C, it does get into if you do put a driveway through or a roadway through a steep slope, they limit how far you can go through, so essentially you can that does have some restrictions. How something could design access through a site with steep slopes. That does provide some protection.
Okay, who's gonna take the, uh, plan to, Ed, is this you? Rewriting a little bit?
Yeah, but I guess, what are we actually adding in?
Well, we're changing the twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Fifteen to twenty-five percent.
What are we actually accomplishing if we add this?
Oh, if we add this overlay district?
Yeah. If we're not accurate.
I, it will, under performance standards, it does add some more detailed restrictions as to how you could go through a steep slope area, which we already, right now, we just do a driveway limit, but somebody could carry eight percent for three hundred feet through a steep slope area. But by putting something like a seventy-five foot limit, that might not let them go through that steep slope area. Even if you angle your way up a slope.
You thinking that we covered twenty-five percent by the other definitions we already have?
Well, except for the fact we don't call out like roadways and stuff, so I think it always comes up as a question as to whether or not that area could be utilized for that. We talked about buildings, so we think of structure, not driveways or roadways.
I just like under performance standards, it like, it takes this twenty-five percent and actually defines like if you're gonna develop in it or near it, what you're allowed to do. When currently we don't really, it's left interpretive to the board for every application. It might remove some of those future questions, the back and forth.
So looking at, um, five five C two any driveway or other access roads must be designed? Should that be, shall be designed? There we go, must. Performance sta, standards C two. There's must be designed. Do we stick in the word shall be?
Shall give just more of a
Shall be designed.
Recommendation feeling?
It has muscle.
Must and shall are similar, but when you say should, it's, means it's, okay, well, it's interpretive, where shall is saying, well, that's, that is
That's the law.
The rule. After that.
I think that one specific performance standard is, is an improvement even of what we currently have the ability to
Yep, shall's used in other places.
Yeah, I think there's value in, in looking to performance. Control things or describe things better.
Just trying to think of the two is with the, the building height definition, the grade plan, so if we're saying twenty-five, like less than twenty-five percent and you get those different varying heights, it's not like once I have the max. But the
So under performance standards though, we will strike performance standard, subject, uh, five B, right? Because we already specify the limits on slope elsewhere in the subdivision?
Well, uh, in the subdivision, yes.
Yeah. We'd strike part B.
Under five B?
Yeah, five B would be strike. Update everything from fifteen to twenty-five percent for everything.
We wanted to leave it in for, try to reiterate the fact that we want it greater, maybe we can put that as a should. For the road bed or driveway, should not exceed eight percent percentage. I think that, that way it continues to capture the intent. I think I like that better. But should means, it's just a
You're saying leave it in, just change the language, but does that mean that they would need if they exceeded ten, say they exceeded eight percent, would they need a the conditional use, would they need a variance and a waiver from the planning board since it lives in the subdivision and
Right. I don't think so, it should.
So the should would put it to waiver?
No, should be a suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, shall would put it to a waiver.
A, a shall would put it to a
A variance.
So should is allowing flexibility. That's, I'm understanding it now.
And then they would continue to need a vari, a waiver via the subdivision regulation.
The only thing I was about to add, under applicability, under A, this is very minor, in any case, the board may not, may need to judge if, if and when steep slopes are proper, probably going to need it. I think that's fine, out of spots we say.
Everybody's okay with it. Everybody's okay with it.
Yeah. Alright, so, yes, with the definition so far, change to twenty-five percent anywhere from here, add, um, are we adding the twenty?
Two thousand square feet. Yes, yeah.
And that's gonna go under.
That's a modification of three.
Three, three B or three C?
I think Blair was suggesting we might be just reword three B.
Okay.
Use the same terminology there.
Same language.
It should be, should it be contiguous or cumulative? Most of it has a bunch of little mountains, it's like never two thousand square, never exceed two thousand square feet.
And that's, that, that's.
It just keeps undulating or something? Um, you know, I can see that happening. I don't know what that north of the.
Trying to picture this in my head.
Are you talking about using the butts and hollows and calculating the two thousand?
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is like, if you're not, i- is it not considered to be a steep slope? It didn't need, it has to be two, two metrics, it has to be greater than twenty-five percent and has to be like cumulatively more than two thousand square feet.
Well, cumulative you would be adding a little, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
I think it would be contiguous.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, if you're disturbing, you know, it becomes a, an area that has this twenty-five percent slope that is sensitive, then nothing else around it is sensitive if it's less than twenty-five thousand. I mean, tw- twenty-five percent, and then there's another drumlin or whatever it is that, uh, twenty-five percent. I think there has to be individual, I don't think you can add those all up.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah, wondered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. We get to driveways?
Shall not shall. Driveway setback. Move that language together, I'll mail to you and Blair.
Yeah.
For final.
Yeah.
We'll get it on Kevin.
This one will have to like massage, just make sure it fits in with the, yours is just definitions, that should be.
That's just definitions in the, yeah, in the ordinance, yeah.
For the driveways, uh, it's something we can, kinda kicked around, it kinda came up as like a, oops, item on us, on one subdivision that we had in front of us before, where they're putting Brandy Road right on the lot line. The existing house for the neighbor lot was, the abutting lot was pretty close, um, but there was no real purview in our language. So Blair was pulling up some language for driveways. Think we need to consider for roadways too, and, and what we would, how we would do it, we just add it as a buffer into the, um, you know, into the definition somehow. But don't make it overly restrictive, but again, trying to make sure that. Shared driveways, sure, on the common boundary, if they're not shared, you know, ten feet, twenty feet from the lot line, to give that additional separation. I think it's neighborly. And then for roadways, I think it would be a little bit, bit greater than, than that. Road going in. I don't know that we have, hoping this would be an easy insert.
So, uh, roadways without an easy answer. I think it's just, that's one of those downstream effects, a lot of things get toward it. With driveways, um, I think we can do something. I suggested a couple of definitions, one for driveway, one for common driveway. Uh, I don't tend to like to regulate through the definitions, so I just kept it very clean. Um, the idea that the setback would be ten feet, um, and what it would include would be a separate sort of regulatory statement in the, in zoning words. And same with the common driveway, I think that it would be on the lot line, um, and. Uh, the setback, I put a ten feet, I've seen, uh, examples of five feet and I've seen it, um. No, it looks like, yeah, it looks like five and ten feet is the two. Yeah, I'm not seeing it really, or ten feet. I think it's a, it's a good thing to have, like you said, I just think it's a good waiver, but also for, um, pulling drainage, and runoff on someone else's property, um, even sloughing of land, especially as we're talking about steep slopes. Um, I think it's a good idea, um, and I think it's, it's consistent with common communities. Not everyone has done it, I found a lot of communities that are, you know, are, are, like, it's hard to remember.
Ten feet makes a lot of sense, because what it also does is you could, you know, your minimum could be one driveway ten feet off, another driveway ten feet off, that at least gives you that one feet distance between the two.
The hope is like that, remains like.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll consider that, you put it in there as a stronger, it'll almost be something you, 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 you can consider that. I include the acre in the permit.
Yep.
So ten feet, uh, would, would include that, so I might actually put the main trunk of the driveway fifteen feet length, if I'm what that plan looks like. I fully know how far it's, it's trending now, but it'd be pretty complicated. Could I just sort of reconsider, I could use it, maybe pull this out.
I like that, the difference is with a commercial site plan on a state route, they tend to limit you to the projection of the property line, so that would be more strictly that state DOT permit. I like it, but I'm just curious if that's gonna cause any issues. If we approve a site plan that they hold that, but the state allows you to go basically hold that projection usually from your.
Well, I don't know that we even have the ability to enforce the ten.
So that's the thing, so we.
Ten foot location, ten foot setback. State may come in and say, you know, no other place along here is fit. Or has a good sight line, and it's right next to the property line, we may not have a, may not be able to do that because you have to get, you have to have allowed access to the property, so it wouldn't be on the state routes.
I think at a minimum, I'm a fan of the ten foot, just kind of the definition, just a minimum of ten feet from any property line. But, uh, one thing I thought of is, our, what's our minimum for a backlot? Is that twenty feet up front of it, right? They give you a backlot, so twenty feet, is back in the cloud, do we have to place a, somewhere in here, state that? Cause if you only have twenty feet, then you can't meet.
Right, yeah, we can say unless of. Unless it's a must.
Right, except for backlots. That was the only thing I thought of, but I definitely think ten feet's a good measure. Cause if you get to five feet, you might as well do a common driveway, because how do you, you're gonna end up disturbing that whole thing anyway.
And I was thinking twenty, cause that's one of our measurements we need to use now, setbacks. We could just go right into the, the little chart we have between side and rear property lines, accessory build, subject systems is twenty feet, current language, driveways.
I think twenty feet's a little too much.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I think any separation is good.
Let's go with the ten feet.
I like the ten.
Uh-huh.
And then.
Blair, you were thinking of that, that's just the definition?
So, I was adding two definitions, driveway and common driveway, and I was saying that the setback statement, I mean, you could put it in the definition.
I, I agree with you.
Prefer to put stuff into the body.
Yep.
And there's easy places to, to insert it, because, um, in the residential, where you have, where you in the, zone definition, you allow residential. Make statements like, so like for example, the residential, cultural districts, says requirements on the lot, so they must be makers, yada, yada, yada. Um, each single parcel land is required to create a driveway. And then it says, shared driveways, we kept it on the common boundary, shared driveways, and putting owners, you know, record, uh, uh, don't share, or rather, rather than, it'll be ten feet of lot, so I can insert those locations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it needs to be under the requirements.
Yep.
So would that just become like a number three under that, but it would just specify obviously no shared driveways?
Well, the thing I was gonna say, we might wanna suggest in this section is that, under that, it's under setback driveways, blah, 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 blah. Yeah. Should remain.
No, I mean, it could be rock walls, it could be a stone lined ditch, it could be height. Saying it's gonna be vegetated. Great if it was, but.
So would that be like a follow-on statement?
Oh, you made a good point.
So I'm good.
So that, our site plan, so that may, makes sense to the subdivision rights.
Yep.
Also, I'm, I'm thinking of. Yeah, it's not really so much where that road, the roads can be centered and whatever the right of way is. It's more so just the location of a right of way next to a property lot, I think. On a.
Oh, yeah.
That's, so, it's gonna probably meet the ten foot.
The paved section will probably be further away from the right of way.
Yeah, and that's the concern, is a lot of times those right of ways are fully cleared right of ways. That's more of the concern, so then you can't restrict where somebody lays out a right of way, cause then you're leaving a sliver of land, which then causes more issues, because now that's a potential unbuildable sliver of land left around the property lot. It's a lot to think about.
But, I think, you keep that in mind while it's fresh, we can track that, if we get up off our agenda in the spring.
So I'll take care of this part, drive, drive my setback, um, I'll look for language review that, uh, you'll, you'll send it along with me. And then get it over to Kevin, probably.
Yeah.
And I'll find out if it's a summary, I'm sorry, did you guys determine if it's a summary or if it's?
Well, I'll do that, I'll just check back on what we've done before.
And I'll double check with Jen and the team and just see what everybody goes.
I think the public notice ends with the summary, and then just there, the, the language is actually posted somewhere.
So by understanding, this is the way that we were talking about it from us, certain of our staff. You would essentially, what they said they're gonna do is that you, on the screen, that proposed line, that, that, the, the orders, and then franking out language that's being removed, and then adding in, uh, underlying the, the language that's gonna be added into the.
Editing, where?
Running doc, she had a running doc.
Yeah.
For the purposes of this image, would you rather I send you this as a, have I love the PDF, and you could look that as an image that would be placed in Word doc? Or would you rather me flip this as a JPEG? I could send you the PDF and you could just snip it, snip your own image.
Alright. We all good? Excellent. Finally, finally focused on this stuff.
Yeah, thanks everybody for checking meeting in December.
So, should we, should we have a vote? Do you think it needs a vote to recommend these to be posted?
Or, I mean. Well, so we have to turn this around, right? We're gonna turn around our edits, because ideally we wanna post, we wanna post it next week.
This is the first meeting, the first public meeting of this, this is normally a scheduled public meeting on the bill. It's not really a special meeting.
Right.
So then, yeah, I don't know if you need a vote, I mean, a meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Could vote just to cover ourselves, doesn't hurt.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, forward with the public hearing for, with proposed zoning changes, uh, for, as discussed.
Second.
Second. Proved favor, did I?
Aye.
Proved.
So, uh, you guys can add me. Uh, actually, I'll probably send it to you as three documents, okay, so the, you go for the document, yeah, I'll, I'll take it on that. It might be like one document for definitions.
Because there'll be, the, they're gonna be three different, I was thinking that these are gonna be three different zoning amendments.
Three things they vote on.
How, that meeting or after that meeting is? Yep, let's go to legal.
Basically all three documents would live as individual PDFs.
It can, it's gonna get posted.
Okay, so I, so it's fine to post without getting.
Would be nice to make them aware that it was posted though.
Yeah, it'd just so be case.
But we'll have a public hearing, which, you know, that if they have other comments, they can provide that input at that hearing.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could get it.
Uh, please, thank you, regarding the public hearing, if you have a continuation, if you have one new, uh, competition, uh, probably this is gonna be part of the first meeting on the floor, don't worry, um, so, that's, then I bump the new to the second.
There's nothing on the second one right now, I think we've pushed everything to the first meeting.
And so, um, the second meeting on the lot, food board would be.
We may not, we don't have an opportunity.
So, there's no changes effect?
Will we come back and have one?
Yeah. Yeah, we might need to. See, like if we don't have, if we don't have final feedback from the fire chief or something, we'll do this.
I think if, as it's been commented before, we don't get input at these public hearings or public meetings, so why have two of them? When no one's gonna come and talk about them.
Definitely the.
So getting that feedback from town council, then, it's part of the first meeting. He must have had that.
I think whenever we get it over to be posted, you immediately send it off.
Someone wanna motion adjourned?
So moved.
For adjourned?